It's item number two, appearance of interested citizens. That was a good segue. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with the public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chamber. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Let's go ahead and get started with those in the audience first before we move to those who are online. Mr. Burns.
Good evening. So I want to talk about the crime spree in Yuba City. Okay? And I'm just going to tell you about the little bit that I've been involved with and a little bit that I know of. Okay? First of all, in my, in the business district where we are, our mailbox was ripped open, the community mailbox, and all the mail stolen out of there. Okay? It took me a while to realize that it impacted me because I don't get my mail there, but I put my outgoing mail there. So I don't even know if it's worth it to make a police report on the deal, but that started a huge identity fraud program for me. Cost me a lot of money. And we have, in our area over there off of the Garden Highway, it's a free-for-all. Okay? Now, we have, just what I, I'm aware of is people are going through my yard, you know, taking whatever they feel like they want. They're cutting holes in my fence, okay? Across the street at R.B. Spencer, they're getting into his yard and taking stuff from him. My son told me tonight that down the street at Frito Lay, they took a bunch of catalytic converters out of the vehicles, okay? Right back across the corner from me, they took one of the guys, he does specialty cars and stole one of his cars. And on and on and on and on. So the homeless operate with impunity in this area. And, you know, I don't know, chief, what are we going to do? But we're tired of it. And something has to be done. The, my son said he was talking to a police officer in Yuba City PD, and he said, hey, there's no punishment for crime anymore. I guess, is that, is that the reality that we face? There's no punishment for crime anymore? So what can be done? I mean, maybe a little, the patrol officer might have to get out of his vehicle, you know, walk around a little bit because they're creeping all over our area all the time.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I would say absolutely it is worthwhile to always report the crimes because it shows us the ability to track patterns and trends and stuff and see if we can tie them into another crime or something like that. I took a lot of notes here. And one thing I will explain real quickly is that the city is divided into different beats. Each beat in the city, there's five different beach, has an officer assigned to that for at least an eight-month period of time so they get familiar with the area. And then we have five different officers who are assigned to the different shifts. So there are basically six different officers plus a sergeant assigned to that beat, and they're very familiar with the crimes. With what you just told me, I will pass that on to them, and if you'd like, I'll take your number and have somebody contact you directly.
I spoke to two of your officers recently.
Okay. And as far as crime and punishment, it is a, it doesn't match up. It is frustrating for us as officers. I can only imagine how frustrating it is for the citizens. I wish there were a better matching of the system right now, and COVID is frustrating about, with the sense that we've had certain crimes where a person's been released rather than being booked in jail because of different issues and committed three of the same crimes in the same day. So it does get frustrating, but I will tell you that none of our officers are reversed arresting anybody, and we would be happy to work with you. Please call us, and we will do the best that we can do and continue to do that. But if you ever have complaints, I will also leave my card with you.
I don't know exactly how to respond other than to say that the points you bring up are not isolated. And I know that our police officers are out there doing a lot, but it's not necessarily putting a dent in what's going on. And it's frustrating because those of us who own businesses and are impacted by that, myself included, understand the difficulty and the challenge the police department's facing right now in regards to interfacing with someone and the lack of ability to perhaps enforce that which you and I would think should be enforced. And it's not because they don't want to or can't, it's because the system is not allowing them the opportunity to do that. And that's probably as delicate a thing as I can say right now. But to Mrs. Elphick's comments earlier, as far as priorities, this council continues to be engaged with the homelessness problem that's facing the city on multiple facets, not only through our law enforcement, but also some of the other opportunities to divert folks from homelessness, intercede when those are at that tipping point, trying to keep them from becoming homeless and becoming, you know, further on down the line. So I know that our, recently our homeless liaison officer presented here as well. And, you know, we're getting new intel all the time about how better to try to deal with an issue that is really affecting all of California, not just the city of Yuba City. I wish I had a 100% solution for you. All I can tell you is that is certainly top of mind, continues to be top of mind, and we are exploring everything that we can do to protect our businesses and our residents. We hear about it a lot. Yes?
In that business, it's lumber and logs, we had the similar problem with this particular group that started a fire in the back area. But one of the issues is you have city, you have county, and then you have the water district, the reclamation district. So it seems to me, well, almost, it started a fire, a huge fire, it built rapidly, and if we hadn't had our people on the premises with water trucks our own, it would have taken out our log deck. So you're talking maybe a million dollars in logs. So there is a huge ramifications from this lawlessness, really is what it is. But can't the county and the city and reclamation districts get together and come up with some kind of plan? It's not going to be perfect, but maybe it will help instead of being separate.
Sure. I'd let the chief of police talk about some of the efforts to help you understand those kinds of synergies that are trying to occur right now.
Through the mayor, do you mind also inviting our city manager, because we've just had some dialogue around that particular aspect of the work that you're mentioning that the chief was not part of, if you don't mind?
Yeah, let's let the chief speak first.
So to address your concern, Ms. Elphick, about the working together, so that hasn't happened in the past for a variety of reasons, but right now, we have a homeless liaison officer from the city. The county has an equal person doing the same type of thing. That's why we work together. We have a lot to catch up on right now, a lot of different projects and stuff that are going along, that are moving along still. But we are catching up with a lot of different areas. If you go down to Second Street, you'll see that there are no longer the trailers down there. If you go down to Mosquito Beach, there are no longer the campers down there. So we're working jointly with them, and we will have our homeless liaison officer come down here and do another presentation again. I would invite the businesses down there to please let me know and to work with him as we go through the process a little bit more because they are working hand in hand together. And we definitely want to work to solve the issue, but of course homelessness and law, you know, they're two different things, but they kind of create some of the same issues. But absolutely, I would send somebody down there to talk with you as well, but you will see a lot of projects coming together with what council member Esmondola was saying as well, that we understand it's just not, you can't solve it by crimes. You have to give people homes and you have to give them opportunities and stuff. So that's the biggest component of it, and we are putting a lot of resources into that as well right now. So I really appreciate all the counties working together, not just Yuba City and Sutter County, because obviously there's no gates and stuff like that. Everybody goes back and forth, and they go to the areas that are the easiest to inhabit. And if we don't provide them the resources, obviously they're not going to get out of that situation. So we're trying to do that right now. We will continue to work with that.
What we found is that there's a certain element of that community that really doesn't want anything to change. They just don't want it. And, but I do want to say for the record that the police department and the fire department are just awesome, and they do terrific work, and when we call them, they're there. So I feel very good about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, if you have a question for me, do you want me to stay?
So you were talking about some, oh, once again, I'm Christopher Bird, sorry. Talking about like some of the, you know, it's really difficult for you to take somebody in and then keep them held because of some of these COVID restrictions that are being passed down from, you know, down into your facility. Once again, doesn't it come up to us and you and the sheriff to say, hey, listen, I'm sorry, we're not going to let criminals back out on the street? Sorry, no. If masks work, give them a mask. Social distancing work, social distance them. You know, they get sick, put them in an infirmary. And, but to just release somebody back out because, oh, they might get sick, that's ridiculous. And so wanted to address that, and then once again, we go into the COVID thing, a lack of jobs because of downgrading to even though we're now in the red tier, so we can now have 50% occupancy, which is, once again, you're taking the ownership of a private business away from the business owner and making them run the business how they hire upstate bureaucrats. Don't give a damn about us, don't give a damn about the people working, don't care about our children, and we follow what they say. And it's decimating jobs, which then leads to more drugs, more alcohol, more poverty, more homelessness. It's a downward spiral. And then we're not even allowed to house the criminals. So, I mean, come on, sometimes, once in a while, you know, we just got to use some common logic, some critical thinking, maybe some reasoning, you know? I mean, instead of just blindly following what we're told to do. Once, and then if I'm correct, there's going to be a human health and services building relocated over by the Tasty Buffet and...
Hold on. If you want to talk about something separate, I still have a pending report from the city manager.
I thought it all kind of went into it.
I'll call you back up, but I think the chief was wanting, thought you might have a follow-up question, so I allowed it.
That was it about, mainly about the jails and, you know, that. I mean, that's a big solution to the problem right there is run your jail how you want to run your jail, how it's the best for the community. That's it, man. People just need to become American again.
All right. Mr. City Manager, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilwoman Esmondola, who's been serving on the homeless consortium for a very long time, is allowing me the opportunity to give a brief overview as to some of the efforts that are going on currently, and I'm going to defer back to her on some of the things that we're doing in the future. But Yuba-Sutter community has really taken a strong stance and an effort in trying to help this, put, help getting homelessness off the street. One of them is the Harmony Village, which is located off of Highway 20, which is, has really helped the sheriff's department and other folks, you know, kind of create a better environment for folks up there, plus all the items that were going up, going on up there that were illegal activity. Now we're not going because of the use of that location. Also, to Ms. Elphick's point, if you go over on Second Street, there's a partnership between Sutter County and the city of Yuba City, which we've created a campground, which is now allows people to sort of have a one-night or two-night camping, and we move them along. It's not really being used a lot, but it has removed all of the campsites that we were seeing along Second Street there, from the baseball park all the way to Whittaker Hall. And I think those are just examples of the efforts that the city and county, both sides of the river, if you will, are taking on to try and improve, you know, the impact of homelessness. To Ms. Elphick's point, not all want to be impacted with that, but we are doing our best, and I'm very fortunate to be able to start participating in that group and helping the councilwoman put forward the city's efforts in that piece.
Thank you. Mr. Burns?
I wanted to comment on something the chief said. He said that we needed to provide opportunity. Well, to borrow this little, apart from Elton John song, "Opportunity awaits you like a rat in a drain," you know, there is opportunity out there that is huge. That's what I, I mean, every business owner that I know would love to hire some people. So give me a young man or young woman that wants to work, and there's some opportunity. We'll hire them tomorrow. So I don't believe the lack of opportunity is an issue, really. There is plenty of opportunity. So I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm Gary Mainz. The homeless issue, I think it unfairly has been put upon the backs of government. The public has done this. The public in general, we, and I can also speak for the church as a Christian, I would say that we as Christians, our effort to help the homeless has been feeble at best. We have pushed God out of our lives in many areas in our whole society, and we push the responsibility of helping these broken people, their wounded people, either emotionally and then sometimes financially, things have happened, and we've pushed that, and I guess I'm talking more to the audience than to you guys, but we pushed that onto the backs of government and said, fix it. And you're limited to do that. I mean, basically what you can do is put them somewhere and house them for a while, and they're out of sight, out of mind, but that doesn't change their lives, and I put that upon us as people. Whether you're a Christian or not, you can be a moral person and love and help people. Compassion is the glue that will bring us together and help the homeless. So I just want to say, you guys, thank you for all your efforts, but don't try to take it all upon yourself. You can't fix it all. We as a people, as a people that we turn back to God, will find the ability to love beyond ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Hi, my name's Mike Smith, Unity Forest Products. Also, I wanted to let you know, there is another section of law enforcement that's supposed to be involved with the area down by the river. And once you get over the toe of the levee, it's considered California State, so that is a California State Trooper Response Plan. The sheriffs are actually supposed to do it because I've been involved with this for 10 or 15 years now, or reporting incidences. And whenever we have an incident, because we have one probably weekly, where some, where basically you have a homeless that cuts our fence, and they want to get in and get scrap iron or whatever you want to say, and then run across the street where the recycle plant is and get their five bucks, or go over to Marysville Flea Market with a $3,000 tool and get $25 for it. I also want you guys to know, I appreciate you guys cleaning up Second Street. I've been down there and helped a few people. There was people down there that really needed and wanted the help, but there was also people that you can do anything in the world for them, but if they don't want to be found, they won't be found, or they don't want to be. The frustrating part to me is when I moved to this community 30-some years ago, you could take your little family down there or whatever and have a picnic at the river and have fun down there, have your kids fish and not worry about anything. But the people that don't want to be found, you guys are saying out of sight and out of mind right now, there are camps at that river where nobody really bothers them. You know, they have their own law and all the other stuff down there, or there's a couple of people that run that thing. But to get that, I would like to see the whole area cleaned up, and that means the state has to get involved with it too, to, you know, it's very sad to see our waterways as dirty and, you know, if they would pick up their litter. I mean, they got all the time in the world, but, you know, you guys have dumpsters and other things down there, but it's very frustrating to, well, most, some of you guys are fishermen, go down there with a boat and see all of the trash and all of the stuff in the river, and it's very frustrating. The state of California will not do anything about it, and I don't know if they're trying, but, you know, that's another, let's say, government group that should be involved with trying to get these guys, these people taken care of, because they do need taken care of. I made quite a few older friends down there because they could not afford the housing here in Yuba City. And there was a lot of people down there that just needs a little help somehow, but with what happens, I mean, you know, they're on an income that they can't afford things around here, and it's sad.
Thank you. The affordable housing in the area, you hit on a key point there, it is an important aspect that is driving some folks to find it very difficult to find shelter. And so again, that's another piece that we as a city have been doing what we can financially to support that, and will continue to do so. Mr. Mayor? Yeah?
Thank you. This is obviously a very important topic that is near and dear to many people that are here this evening. I just wanted to remind the city council and the public that this is a public comment section and not a public discussion item, and generally that if we are going to be involved in a discussion of any intensive length about a topic, we don't have that agenda this evening. So I just wanted to flag that for the council, this is public comment communication, not necessarily public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, was it? Did you have, you said you had one other thing you wanted to bring up? It's public comment, not questions, but...
Christopher Bird, again. It was on the same topic of the crime, poverty, the homelessness, the drug abuse, alcohol abuse, all that stuff. And I don't know, like I said, I just moved here about three years ago, and I'm curious, do we have facilities to maybe, you know, afford rehabilitation for people that can't afford to go to $30,000 rehab, you know, facilities, but like something more for the public, something for like the homeless that do go into the jails, when they're coming out because of these types of behaviors or criminal activities, that they can go into a facility instead of being released right back out into the gutter?
The simple answer to that is there are things that are available to them. The much more complex is, you know, what those, what those things are. There are things like coordinated entry, where people can be directed to the help that they need, whatever that help may be needed. We have invested locally in affordable housing. Again, if you've come to our meetings, you'll find that we have a hard time deciding what affordable really is these days, but there are options for folks, and there will continue to be investment in that. But really, the idea is to get those folks who want to hand up, right, that kind of assistance so that they can, you know, reestablish themselves, find housing, find work, and do the things that will keep them off the streets.
Maybe mental health follow-ups in order to help them with their transition.
Yeah, there's resources, yeah. Again, I think, I would encourage you...
We have to go through a lot of that stuff coming back from combat, and that was a big thing. I was homeless, I was a full-blown alcoholic, homeless, back and forth, and I needed a lot of help and direction and, you know, of resources and facilities and good, maybe even face-based program type deals, those are magical for that type of thing. So if we can just, you know...
All right. I'm going to let Councilwoman Esmondola speak on this, and then unless there's anybody else that wants to speak on the homicide, and we'll move to... Go first.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the input, Chris, all of you. It's very valuable to listen firsthand. When we get to the agenda, Mayor, perhaps we always talk about future agenda items. This topic, having so many discussion about the homelessness, we do, I'm part of the Yuba-Sutter Homeless Consortium. If you haven't looked that up, you can Google it, Yuba-Sutter Homeless Consortium, there's a website. And in that, I'm a board member, one of the founders, in that there are multiple systems, I don't want to get too complex in the conversation, but there's multiple systems of support and assistance, and it's coordinated efforts, as you were talking about, Anita, coordinated efforts of jurisdictions, different services, and our city manager is on a fast track of learning all this right now. So when we get to the future agenda items, Mayor, perhaps we can invite a few panel on the homelessness and have just a workshop discussion around that topic to bring the community up to date on everything that is occurring, because Dave and I just participated in a, which I was going to report later, on a, they call it a JPA, which is Joint Powers Agreement, by multiple jurisdictions, meaning Yuba, Sutter, and then all the municipalities within those counties, and we're part of that group, and we just met to align policies, to align services, to align directions of law enforcement, of health, of mental health. And to answer your question very quickly about treatment, because it sounds like treatment is a big issue, it's very limited here in this area, very, very limited. Sutter, Yuba and Sutter Behavioral Health provides some treatment programs, but they're not in-house outpatient. So not to get into much into the weeds, I could really go into and dive into the conversation of this, but if the community here and the community that is watching, Mayor, maybe perhaps when we get to the future agenda, I can recommend a workshop on bringing us all up to date on the conversation of homelessness, if that could help move us along. Thank you.
Look forward to that recommendation. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, since this is public comment, I would just like to raise a point of information for the, for the public. Heard a lot of comments tonight, and we as your council control what we can control, and we can't control what we can't. And a lot of your topics this evening are all controlled by Sutter County. You mentioned jails, mental health, the homeless funnels down through the county, and we work in conjunction. I would highly encourage you, if you haven't attended, attend a Sutter County Board of Supervisors meeting and bring this up with them because they have the authority of the things that's under their control, and we do not have the authority of things that are under our control. So just a point of information.
Vice Mayor, as a reminder, Sutter County Board of Supervisors meet in these chambers.
And Mr. City Manager, if I may, could you remind them when that might happen so they could visit them next meeting?
We are first and third, they are second and fourth Tuesdays of every month.
3:00, I believe, City Managers.
They have morning meetings, but most of the time they're 3:00 in the afternoon, but I'm happy to share that on our website as well.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Final call for public communication.
Mr. Mayor, can I chime in for a little?
Absolutely.
I'd like to touch a little bit on the homelessness issue, and Gary, I thought you did a great job when you, when you mentioned it, it shouldn't be all about government. There are organizations, and the shining example of one in our community is Say Love. And if you were driving down Secretary a couple of months ago... And, um, if you were driving down Second Street a couple months ago, you would've seen people, Saylove, gloves, boots, picking up trash. And we actually had homeless people walk across the levee and help us out, and it, it kinda woke me up about my perceptions. And so, uh, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Councilman.
I just, Jason, again, uh, I just wanna advocate for my daughter, and I'm, like you said, I don't know if I'm supposed to be city or, uh, or the county for this, for, uh, my daughter is visually impaired, and she crosses the streets, so the crosswalks with the beeping lights are very important to her. Uh, the one at the, uh, Winco parking, uh, crosswalk, uh, she goes to in shape, uh, when it's open. But to cross there, 'cause she rides the bus system, does not have it, so when she crosses there, it's very hard for her to cross. She sometimes has to, uh, wait three lights before she crosses because of the traffic and the noise there, and she does not know when to cross that. So, I would like to see about getting the beeping crosswalk there.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll look into that and get back to Mr. Khan.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.